I now call the May twenty seventh, two thousand and fourteen work session of the Riverton City Council to order at six thirty. Would Councilmember Larson please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk conduct the roll call, please?
Yes, your honor, Councilman Rich Gard.
Here.
Councilman Martin Catan.
Here.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Todd Smith.
Here.
Mayor Ron Wartness.
And I am present. It's my understanding that Councilmember Christensen is supposed to be here this evening, but let's go ahead and excuse her in case she's not able to make it. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Christensen from tonight's meeting.
Your honor, I'd make a motion to approve the absence of Councilman Christensen.
Second.
Been moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. I declare that we have a quorum this evening. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented.
Your honor, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Been moved in second. Is our discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Fiscal year fourteen fifteen budget, city administrators' report, please.
Yes, your honor. Good evening, mayor, council, citizens of Riverton. I don't know where the citizens are, but they're out there somewhere. Pleased to present you tonight the City of Riverton two thousand and fourteen fifteen budget. This budget, for many of you in the past, is very similar. It's divided up into ten sections. We have a overview, general fund, enterprise funds, fixed costs, administrative allocations, contract for services, employee compensation, capital reserves, and a conclusion. So I'd like to start off with a budget quote. It's by an unknown author. "A budget is just a method of worrying before you spend money as well as afterward." Do you think there's any truth to that? I think most of us have been worrying about this budget for a couple of months now. A lot of time spent on it. A budget is a financial plan, and it lists all the planned expenses and revenues. A budget is our best guess, best estimate for what we will receive and expend during the coming year. Budgets can be amended throughout the year. So the City of Riverton has a total budget, including capital of twenty million one hundred and ninety-nine thousand six hundred and ninety-eight. That is down by six point nine million from last year. Why is it down so much? Related to capital. It's not because of operations. So capital projects are down quite a bit compared to what we had last year, which is good in a lot of ways because we had a lot going on. We have a balanced budget. This year has been a lot harder for us than it has been in the last two years, especially for myself. In the budget, the two major types of funds are the general fund and the enterprise funds. General fund is the primary operating fund of the city and is used to account for the revenues and expenditures of most tax-supported activities of the city, such as the police department, the largest department in the general fund. Enterprise funds are businesslike funds because they run like a business. Fees are charged for external users to cover services provided, example, water, sewer, and sanitation funds. I'd like to thank the department heads and division managers for their efforts in this And feel free to stop me at any point as we go through this. I don't need to just be a talking head up here. If you have questions, let's not wait till the end. Just interrupt me, and we can ask, answer them, and if I can...
Your honor, do we address him, or do we address you to get his?
I think you should address through me.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The City of Riverton has held its own the last several years. We have not had to cut positions or decrease services in the past couple of years. Our success is our lean staff and good budget projections. We also monitor the revenue expenditures constantly to make sure we are right on track. We will maintain our financial reserves in fiscal year two thousand and fifteen at eighteen point five percent per council policy. Revenues in all funds exceed expenses except in the airport. Airport is subsidized by the general fund. Out of the twenty-eight divisions, fourteen divisions were less than, were five percent less than the previous budget. Ten percent indicated slight increases, and only four increased more than five percent. In each fund, department, or division, you will find a summary page that gives the mission, description, revenue assumptions if applicable, and expenditure highlights. This will give you some background to the department and any major changes from the prior year. We started this a couple of years ago, and it's been proven successful to help anyone that just picks up the budget to know what's going on. So now we'll move to general fund revenues. They're estimated to be eight million twenty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. We estimated slight increases in property tax, motor vehicles, charter cable, source gas, and Rocky Mountain Power franchise fees, and plan review. We're estimating decreases in sales tax, supplemental funding, and court fines. The supplemental funding is a little confusing because this year the legislature actually increased the amount to local governments. But the funding is based on a two-year cycle, so in the next two years, we'll be getting more than we did in the previous two years. However, it's lower than last year. So in fiscal twelve thirteen, we received six hundred and one thousand two hundred and thirty-eight. Fiscal thirteen fourteen, which was last year, we had eight hundred and ninety-one thousand. And then in this fiscal year, we will receive seven hundred and seventy-two thousand eight So sales and use tax are the largest source of revenue for the general fund. They account for thirty-two percent of the revenue in the general fund. This year, we've been running about ten percent behind than what we'd budgeted. Grants account for twenty-seven percent of the entire budget for the city. In fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, staff was instrumental in obtaining five million six hundred and seventy-six thousand and ninety-six dollars in grant funds for municipal projects. Grant management is a significant effort in making sure that we comply with the conditions of the grant. And Gloria, our finance director, is doing a fabulous job. There was no findings in our last audit. Six million eight hundred and eighty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-six is projected to be spent toward capital projects next year. Of that amount, eighty-three percent of the funds needed to complete these projects will come from granting agencies. So general fund expenditures. Any questions?
I had a couple. Under the general fund for fines and forfeitures on revenue, court fines, we're looking at receiving a hundred and forty thousand, is that right?
That's right.
And the, going back and looking at the expenditure side, that that side of the equation is costing us about two hundred and sixty-three thousand. And is that fairly normal in all of our funds that there's a spread between what we're taking in and what we're actually costing us?
Well, particularly in that, I mean, other funds, hopefully in our water, sewer, and sanitation, we should be taking in more than we're getting back. But I know, like, in the community development department, we've always had the policy that we don't bring in enough to cover operations.
I know in the building department, it doesn't, the fees and permit fees and whatnot don't cover the cost. And I was just wondering if that was pretty normal.
Well, and they're down a little bit on the court fines and what they've been in the past. If you look in the history there, I think we budgeted a hundred and eighty thousand, I think, last year.
Last year.
So that's down forty thousand.
And then on the plan review, it's jumped from fifteen thousand to thirty-seven thousand.
Yeah, I believe that's the biggest one, is the, isn't that from the DOL monies? The plan reviews?
It just seems like quite a jump, and I was just curious as to what...
Yeah, I thought it was job corps was the reason.
Yeah. Your honor?
Yes.
I believe that there was some additional money, but it should, instead of going into plan review, it should have actually gone into our permits, and I think that may be... I didn't look at that, but I think that the planner's view should stay at the fifteen thousand. And what that is, is a lot of times we do, we outsource our plan reviews, and so we have a line item in expenses is fifteen thousand, and one in revenue is fifteen thousand because it is just a wash on that one. And so the additional money should have gone into our building permit fees because we received extra money from the Department of Labor for our job corps project.
Let me see.
Correct.
Okay, so the general fund has fourteen departments or divisions. Mayor, council, city administrator, municipal court, administrative services, IT, building maintenance, police, fire, public services, streets and alleys, fleet maintenance, weed and pest, parks, and community development. Expenditures are fairly flat compared to last year, with many below what we spent last year. One of the reasons for the increase in the police department budget was that we merged the victim witness with the police budget, and that's why that one went up overall. Would encourage you to refer to the summary sheets in front of each of the divisions. They will go over the highlights in each of those divisions of what has changed from the previous year. I'm going to go over a few of them. We can start in the mayor and council. The largest increase was in the mayor council budget was the legal services, and that's to pay for the additional costs for the city attorney to intervene in the EPA ruling. Decreases were in job corps, expenses, travel and training, council contingency, and four two two. And the four two two line item was in there when we agreed to have it remediated, and they've been going through that process, and they've assured me that by the end of this fiscal year, they should be done. So we can talk about that a little bit later in contract for services for looking for extra money. The City Park Water Feature is a placeholder. That was money that was donated at the time when the Main Street was going on, and so it's always been in there. It just never was actually put as a line item in the budget. So we just put that in there because that was actually donated by certain people for that specific cause.
Yes, Councilman Gard.
If we never build a water feature, do we give that money back, or do we ask to move, if they're, for their permission, to move it to another fund, or do we just carry it forever?
Well, yeah, I mean, that would have to be determination of the council of, I mean, if that, if we wanted to apply it to something else, ask them, or refund the money back. That'd probably be the appropriate way to do it.
Okay. Thank you. And I don't think it would be, I have a little bit of my own personal money in that account, and I don't think it would be inappropriate to ask to move it somewhere else if, you know, and the individuals that have donated that money in there may well be willing to do that, depending on what the project is and whatnot, so.
I was thinking of a statue there.
I was hoping that we would get that darn water feature in there sometime, but it doesn't look like that's going to happen in my lifetime, so.
Okay, then we have enterprise funds. We have four enterprise funds, water, sewer, sanitation, and airport. Enterprise funds must generate sufficient revenues to meet their operating obligations. Rates were increased in May of two thousand and fourteen by the CPI rate of one point one, except for the sewer fund that was increased by seven percent to meet current demands and keep operating reserves of eighteen point five percent. Sewer rate was set in place by the council for just one year. It will be looked at again in April of two thousand and fifteen to determine if the rate increase will stay or revert back to the previous rate. So here's the enterprise funds operations. As you can see, it shows the revenues and expenditures in the enterprise funds. This is just the operational budget. It doesn't include the capital. As you can see, all the enterprise fund revenues exceed expenditures except for the airport, which is subsidized by the general fund. One thing to note is cash balances can only be used for operations of that particular fund. You can't transfer them with inter-fund loans, where you set up an interest rate and repayment schedule. These funds are supposed to be self-sufficient. The excess funds goes toward the council policy of eighteen point five percent and toward reserves for future capital projects. So as you can see, we're doing pretty well in all of them. Sanitation is always kind of the low end. We just kind of make it work every year.
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Fabian.
So in the, in the water fund, where is the consensus money accounted for as far as the revenues for the service pumps?
That's in our capital. That's not in, that's not in this. This is just operations we're dealing with.
That's why I couldn't find it.
Here's some expenditure highlights in the enterprise funds. We'll start off with the water fund. Testing requirements for operating permit by the Wyoming DQ for the water plant continue to increase and reflect with increase in laboratory supplies. Each year for the last several years, the water treatment plant has experienced a but, a problem with a different well, which has not been budgeted for. The general maintenance line item was substantially increased to budget for this situation. Personnel costs have increased with the addition of the public works secretary being added to a new fund. She was, I shouldn't say she, but the public works secretary position used to be funded out of one particular fund, but they actually, as a secretary, hit all operations, and so we're moving that under all the different operations to make it more accountable of what she, what she actually does. In the sewer fund... This thing's flipping out on me here. I'm gonna have to get out my... Backup plan. So in the sewer fund, the wastewater treatment plant computer needs to be upgraded. Testing requirements to meet the limits of the three separate operating permits required by the Wyoming DQ for the plant continue to increase, which reflects an increase to the laboratory supplies. Personnel costs have increased a little bit with the addition of the public works secretary. And then in the sanitation fund, sanitation operations expenditures are relatively flat. Personnel costs have decreased due to changes in personnel. Sanitation, general, and administrative division had increased in personnel with adding a portion of the public works secretary. Professional and consulting costs have been increased to begin the remediation on the old Riverton landfill, and that you'll see on that one a pretty substantial increase. The airport fund. We saw several increases, including the fire truck supplies, travel and training, training diesel because of the new snowplaque, snowplow truck uses diesel. Professional and consulting was increased for capital projects and building maintenance because of the age of building. But overall, in the airport, the budget's down by six percent. Other funds. In the economic development fund, we only have one active project in there, and that's the job corps expenses for the development of Airport Road from Main Street to the job corps. And we currently have a grant for over a million dollars to fund that, and that will be put in after the job corps is built. The nine-one-one fund receives revenue from charges on telephone lines that must be used directly for nine-one-one equipment and maintenance. Can't be used for anything else. Fund number twelve is for the one percent revenues and expenditures. This will ensure that the money we receive from the one percent sales tax will be kept separate from any other city revenues. We're estimating two point one million dollars in revenue. The city has seven loans throughout all the funds, three in water, three in sewer, and one in the airport. Any questions about those?
One question on the, on the one percent through the force. Are we going to get a printout that shows expenditure, something that perhaps the public can have a look at as well?
You mean a breakdown of what things have been spent out of there, right?
Right. I think that would be something that would really be helpful. And we may be doing it now, I don't know.
Well, yeah, because the way it's written in the budget right now, it just shows a, you know, one line item instead of broken down like you see in typically other budgets.
But I just think that it would be important to the public to know, you know, how much money's coming in, how much we're spending it on, what we're spending it on, and that type of stuff, in the interest of transparency, so.
Yeah, we could do that, and probably even put maybe one of those sheets in front of that particular fund, since it is so important. Yeah, I could just list the projects that they've been working on and...
In some cases, it looks like a war zone, and, and that money is coming back, and there are some people that don't see that because they're not driving that direction.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't see what you don't see.
Yeah, if you don't drive in certain parts of the town, you'd wonder, what do they spend their one percent on?
Yeah.
Your honor?
Yes.
How are you guys currently tracking those jobs for payment?
Your honor, we currently provide to the force committee a financial report that shows what the commitments are per project, what they've voted on to fund for personnel projects. We do provide that to the force committee. We already have that broken.
Yeah, so we could just include that in the budget document and have a...
I'm not worried about the budget document. I think we all have the ability to look in, and members of the force committee do, and on and on, but I think if, if we could just have something that is a monthly update, if you will, just a short synopsis of what the force committee's been doing, what roads are working on, how much, you know, and, and, because I think there's a lot of people out here that don't even know that the force committee meets, or who they are, or where they meet, or anything else. And I just think that it would be helpful to have, to make an effort to...
Yeah.
Not necessarily in a budget document or anything like that, but something out in the public's face of what we're doing with our one percent money.
Yeah, your honor, I think that's a good idea, and we can even make an effort in our council meetings. Under my report, I could bring up items that we've been working on, so that the public knows what's going on.
I would prefer, though, your honor, if somebody didn't buy a sign and put that up on the sign, this is being paid for by your one percent, geez, that riles people. Just, just if we could just make it public.
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman.
Perhaps at our monthly work session, we could just put that in as a, something we do at the beginning to put that up there, and anybody who wants to pay attention has ample opportunity at that point.
Go do that, dear. Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Gard.
I had a phone call this week that asked if their curb and gutter was scheduled to be taken care of, and so I called Dawn, and she was helpful and got me that information. And I, I think somehow, whether it's by poster or by information, we need to get that information out so that people understand where that money's being spent and the massive amounts that are being spent.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I can understand people's objection to a sign, but with that said, you know, we're spending, we let out almost a million dollars worth of concrete work, and, you know, you can't have it both ways. You can't have the concrete not fixed without tearing it out, and so you got to have a work zone for a while until things get to looking better. And they are doing a lot of work, and there's a lot of equipment in the streets down there, and maybe they ought to, we ought to encourage them to go drive through that section in town and see the work that's being accomplished there. Eventually, it's going to cover all of town if we keep the monies in place. But if we don't, if we don't advertise that well, people will just think it's being done in front of Councilman Larson's house and nobody else's. And that, that would, you know, that would be a good move, even Councilman Fabian's suggestion of, in the work session, tell which streets are being repaired, and maybe how far that money's, how far we're through the money, if we've, if we've achieved fifty percent of that, or whatever's being allocated. And, and then the overlayment, you know, it would even help to get people ready so that they move their campers and their equipment and stuff off the streets. Thank you, your honor.
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Christensen.
Maybe to simplify it all, we could place that on the TV station that we have.
Channel eleven, yeah.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Yeah. A lot of people look at that. In addition to the sheet that we...
Yeah. Regarding the signage, when, when we were putting that all together, I, I understand what you're saying, but that seemed to be the one thing that most of the one percent committee felt they needed was to have a sign out there so that people knew that this is what their money was being spent on. So, anyway, it's, got two sides to the same issue, I guess, so.
Yeah.
Oh, good ideas. Good ideas.
As are most things.
Fixed cost trends, it's always interesting to try to predict energy costs. Natural gas prices plummeted two years ago, but they seem to slightly be coming back. We've not increased our utility costs in the funds since we have not seen any proposals for significant increases. We've slightly increased our fuel costs because of the cost changing so quickly. Administrative allocations. Administrative allocation provides $1,117,961 relief to the expense burden of the general fund. Staff has used this tool as a way of ministering the true costs of the enterprise funds by an allocation back to the general fund. The true cost of doing business on the enterprise side of the city's budget is very clear and supported by our auditing team. Contract for services.
Yes, Councilman Gard. Just to clarify that, that's the means of getting management fees back out of the enterprise funds, back into the general fund where we pay the salaries and expenses.
That's right.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I have a question for Courtney. Is there a certain percentage of that's, that you have to comply with for that administrative allocation? The auditors or do they stipulate a certain percentage?
No.
No?
We come up with that in-house.
Oh, okay.
So for instance, mayor and council has a different percentage per fund as opposed to information technology if we have a huge capital project with, with wastewater treatment plant or something, if they have a software program or upgrade or something. So, so we look at that. We also look at the amount of accounts payable that we pay out of that to see where the heaviest usage is and so we go back on that and we look at the percentages every year. So what I'm saying is that it could be for mayor and council, it could be 70% general fund and yet the other, you know, 30% is divided among the four enterprise funds.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Gard.
How does the auditing team look at that? Do they look at that as a percentage or do they just take your statement as so you can move as much back and forth or do they have a, they must have some kind of percentage that the statement is that's supported by the auditing team. So somebody's looking at how much money we're moving, correct?
Yes.
And so we can't, we have to justify the movement of that money out of those enterprise funds, correct?
Yes.
So is it a certain percentage?
No.
Just what you take into the meeting to justify the means of money?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So contract for services, this will be one we may spend a little bit of time on because we're still unclear of what we're going to do about this. Included in this budget proposal is $340,867 allocated to nine agency line items within the city budget. All of the funding for contract services requests is taken out of supplemental funding from the state of Wyoming. The city historically has funded contract for services from supplemental funding and the remaining balance is used in capital projects. This is a very good policy since you can't count on these monies year after year. The city held a work session on May 13th, 2014 and heard from each of these services. All of these programs are a great asset to our community and determining who should be funded is a tough decision. Initially staff presented a 15% reduction to all services.
For people who are looking at, I believe it's on page 80. Sorry.
It would help if you could tell us what page you're on.
Oh.
In your workbook because.
Oh, in the workbook.
Jumping all over, we don't have any idea where you're at.
Yeah, the.
It's back under the, back under the general fund part, right toward the beginning.
I don't know if you'll be able to do that.
Well, you'd, actually the contract for service, you look under my budget message that was sent out, it's in there. If you look for the contract for services, this is a lot of the same material that comes from the budget message. Is everyone there? Okay. So the city held a work session on May 13th, 2014 and heard from each of the services. All of these programs are a great asset to our community and determining who should be funded is a tough decision. Initially staff presented a 15% reduction to all services in order to try to make it fair. In the process, it is clear that some services are being provided strictly for the city. In my mind, our recreation pause and volunteers of America are providing services directly for the city, meaning if they walked away, we would have to provide something to replace it or the cost of the city would increase. For instance, with volunteers of America, if they cut a bed which reduces the amount of people they can serve, that will mean an increase in the amount going to jail. Man, this thing is not easy to. If they cut a bed which reduces the amount of people they can serve, that will mean an increase in the amount going to jail which increases our cost for housing them in the county jail. And so some of these services that we have, it's a tough decision to make, but some of them, if we didn't have them, we would have to provide the service. Others of them, they're nice to have, but we necessarily wouldn't have to provide that service if we didn't fund them. So the question is how do we pay for it and still have a balanced budget? The city had to cut $60,153 to make it work. There have been several ideas from council members of how to make this work. There are a few options that I have mentioned before. First is contract for services has been paid out of supplemental funding from the state. We could take more from reserves and apply the money to capital projects, which is what the money is used for and that would free up some from supplemental funding for contract for services. The second is there are two line items in the mayor council budget that could be cut and applied to contract for services. The council contingency, which has $8,000 in there and the 422 East Main, which has a thousand. This could be cut and applied to contract for services. And so if, if you look in there, I don't, I don't know how you feel about that.
Your Honor, I think those are a good idea. Your Honor, I think that's a good idea to take those two line items and use them elsewhere.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Fabian.
All right, so we're proposing to zero out 422 because it's your understanding that that job is going to be paid for prior to this budget coming into effect, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay.
And the council contingency is set up as a, it's like a contingency. So if someone comes in front of the council and asks for us to participate in some project that we haven't budgeted for, the council could give that 8,000 or a portion of that 8,000 to that group. That's, that was the point of having the council contingency in there, but in times of slim pickings, that could be one that, that could be done away with.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Christiansen.
And correct me if I'm wrong, spoke with a past politician. So this retirement, I mean, they are retired from a job such as this and, and they get like $15 a month. I, I mean, I wonder what it would be like to do away with that retirement piece. I don't know if anybody's going to really depend on that $15 a month.
Well, it comes, excuse me, it comes from the state.
Does it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not out of, it's not out of this budget. All school teachers, employees of the state come out of the big coffers of, of the state of Wyoming.
I just thought that little bit of money that we take out for that, if that would be worth.
I'm not sure we could legally do it.
Well.
But it doesn't come from us.
Oh, it does, okay.
Yeah, Your Honor, we, we make that contribution to the volunteer fire department and then they then in turn pay the state for those fees and when I talk to them, if we did have a cut with them, then they would have to decide if the volunteers would have to come up with a portion of that or the district would have to find that money somewhere else.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Do you have any idea whatsoever when, like of the $500 a month, say that a councilman receives as compensation and then obviously taxes and everything else come out, do you know how much the actual amount that we put in versus the amount the city puts in toward the state's retirement fund actually is?
City doesn't put in money.
We, we have to pay in, we, we pay in out of our 500 and so does the city.
No, the city doesn't, it's the state.
Courtney?
The city pays a contribution annually on your behalf as elected officials, $761.41 per individual.
Per?
Per.
That's what I was.
Seven sixty forty-one and then we also contribute out of that 500 or no?
Yes, you do. I, I think you have to contribute 1.43% or something. I don't think we can get, I don't, I'm sorry, Your Honor. I don't, I don't think we could do that differently when we changed that one or two years ago.
Where are you going?
Well, I mean, I was just wondering how much, I mean, so it amounts to.
Four thousand annually.
Four thousand dollars, give or take annually that the city is paying in on behalf of the people sitting here toward that retirement fund, essentially.
And?
Well, I mean, I guess if we wanted to change the amount we got paid or the way we got paid, we could withdraw from that program and, I mean, I don't know, you know, that would save the city the $700 each a year, which could then get turned, well, that, that's general fund money that could then be turned toward paying for contract for services potentially.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. I mean, that was my thought, I guess. I don't know, I mean, I don't.
I, I was just equated to what they, they've, they get $15 a month, probably will for a long time, but I didn't, they figured it was, it cost them more to put, send that $15 than, and I thought that would be a way to add some money to different projects if it was, we were able to do that.
Is, is that something we can do? I mean, is that?
Certainly, Your Honor. You can decide whether to cover them for retirement or health insurance in addition to salaries.
Yes, Councilman Gard. Based in the explanation that given, sponsored the WHAM golf tournament was $4,500 through the, the council and mayor. We're not going to do that again, right?
No.
And so if we pulled those kind of monies out of this budget already.
Yeah, I mean, we, we lowered.
That was my question on the, on the promotional development and dues and I under, I read that and the reply to me that the dues are mostly WHAM dues.
Correctly.
And so I don't know that there's many other levels there that we could, if there's any room for wiggle room that would be substantial, but there's $9,000 there that you have noticed that's targetable. And I, I would make the suggestion that we target everything we can out of that mayor and council budget to go back and try to supplement those community services if we can bring those to a, and if it's only 9,000, that's, that's much more than zero, so.
Yeah, and Your Honor, the, so you have the 9,000 plus you have the 2,250 that was given back to us from the chamber and youth services that were below the numbers that we had. So that, that totals $11,509 is what you have to play around with. And then staff has said that there's a few in the capital general fund that we could probably postpone another year, in particular the, the bucket truck, a used bucket truck. And so we have a little bit of flexibility with that. It's probably not enough to cover all of it, but that gives us a little more flexibility to raise some of these that you feel is very important to do. But we, we do need to have some direction on that in order to put that in the budget.
Councilman Canaan.
Sir, I, I'll throw out my feelings and I guess I would much prefer us see that we stay kind of like on this one page with the, with the $340,000 and if we want to adjust between the contract for services, adjust there rather than robbing Peter to pay Paul from the rest of the budget and, you know, if the rest of the budget is what I'm being told is pretty much balanced and, and flatlined and I guess I would just prefer us to say, you know, if we, if we need to adjust from one contract for services up or down because we feel that one of them provides a service to the city that quote, if they, if they go away, the city's going to have to pick up. If we have other services that if we can cut and aren't going to disappear from, from the city, then I would much prefer us to see us stay on this page and, and adjust from there.
Okay.
You know, Councilman Fabian, Fabian, excuse me, you know, put out an email where he adjusted figures back and forth and I think we probably all have played with those figures in our mind. I guess that would just be my preference overall is let's, let's stay on the one page and, and play with those numbers and see if we can come up with a consensus there before we start jumping around and stealing from other projects.
Okay. Any other comments?
Your Honor?
Yes.
The proposal, I guess that I emailed out actually went so far as zeroing out a couple of the, of the third-party services as far as budgeting goes and I guess I wouldn't feel, I guess I would have a little less heartburn about it if we did maybe try to find a way to get them something. I mean, I, you hate to completely, I mean, you know, the fact of the matter is some of these services are definitely more vital to the city from a city of Riverton standpoint, but from a human standpoint, I don't think you can make that same argument. And so, you know, if, if, if we have to cut to the bone, we'll cut to the bone, but if we don't, I hate to do that personally.
Sir.
Yes.
You know, I'll, I'll throw out my two cents, injury prevention. You know, when they briefed us, they were working with a budget of, I think it was $350,000, you know, we're looking to give them 4,250. You know, during their briefing, a lot of it appeared to me that, you know, again, it was statewide type stuff. I mean, you know, the buckle up type program and the child seats. So again, youth services, you know, we're, we're looking to put in over 38,000, but if I remember correctly, Lander was only putting in 22,000. My two cents right there is that injury prevention that the 4,000 there and if you cut youth services down to match Lander's contribution, that saves you another 16,000 right there. That's, that's $20,000 on that one page to, to play with. You know, to, if we're, if I think our main concern is, is our recreation and, and the fire department. I mean, that's $20,000 to bring fire department back up to the 10,000 where we kind of all seem we wanted them to be and leaves us 19,000 to kick back into our recreation to bring them up real, real close to where they were last year. And that only affects like us two programs.
Any other comments? I guess my thought on this and, you know, the, I'm hearing you say that there's a potential bucket truck that we could do without and I look, you know, almost every contractor in town has a bucket truck that is available to be rented. And I know Jiffy up there has several lifts that are available and so I don't know how often we use bucket trucks and I'm not suggesting at all that it's not necessary, but.
Oh, Your Honor, we, we actually already have a bucket truck, it's just, it's not safe. I mean, when it, when it gets up, the whole car. I mean, when it, when it gets up, the whole car is moving, and, and that's why I'm saying, that's why it could be something that we have. Some of the things, we can't get up to the highest point to actually perform the function that we need to, and we're not even sure we'd be able to find a used one because for 30,000, a bucket truck's gonna have to be fairly used to...
Now, is this 30,000 for a new one then, or...
No, it's used.
A new, used one? Or is, or is it 30,000 repair this?
To repair, no, to buy a, a used one to replace that one.
But it just seems to me like, you know, if, if it's something that we're using all the time, then maybe that's, that's one thing, and I have no feel for, um, how often we've, but I see major contractors around that they don't own their own equipment. I mean, if, if they need a, a big cement saw, they go down and rent it. They don't buy the darn thing. And then they just pay for it and let their, the rental company or whatever, uh, pay for the maintenance and upkeep of it, so, um, at any rate, it's just a thought. Yes.
Big capital. I don't know that we want to mess with the police cars. They're probably, uh, really important to us, but there is that, the bucket truck in a, in a...
Mower.
Mower. And, you know, I, I think at times, um, and then sanitation comes in with a 25, 75 on 230,000. You know, maybe we do something with, with some other group like that and postpone their purchases so that we can fund these third parties.
Yeah, and your honor, that, the 60,000 would bring everybody up to their current level of what they were funded last year. 15, I believe.
15,000? Must be a nice mower. So essentially, the 30,000 plus the 9,000 plus the 15,000 is 54,000, right?
Your honor?
Yes.
May I offer some information on the bucket truck?
Sure.
I'm, I might get fired, but if I could offer some more information, I don't know if I'm gonna start...
Gee, I hope you don't get fired.
I, I just wanna, want to make one last plea for the bucket truck. I went out on that, and I wouldn't go up in that bucket. And the reason the bucket cut, truck is becoming so important is because we have Tim Hugus now, who's tower certified, to go up on those towers for the radios, and we don't have a bucket truck that can get up there. So he harnesses, and he uses proper safety equipment, you know? Um, it is a 17-year-old truck. They've asked for this truck for five years. And so, um, I mean, I would rather push off two law enforcement vehicles. I'm just kidding, Mike. Really, I was just kidding. Just kidding. I felt his eyes.
He's hard, and you better be careful.
So, that is just additional information on the bucket truck.
Okay.
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Gard.
I think that your point is, though, that we could, we could lease that equipment and rent it, and could you give us some idea on what that's costing if we, if we lease that equipment? Have we leased it? And is it terribly expensive? How often do we use it, a bucket truck?
Your honor, I can't tell you how often we use it. I can tell you that our, the use of that truck has picked up since we have an individual that is tower certified to help with those towers instead of calling someone from Casper to come and service the towers. So, um, we've purchased a lot more radios, microwave radios, to go on those towers to help with the service. And so, you know, when Mr. Hugus approached me about getting certi, certified last year, you know, um, it was money well spent because we're saving money every time we go up on those towers. Building maintenance can't change the lights out in the parking lot. Our guys that hang up streetlights or change streetlights on Main Street can't reach those, so...
But, but your honor, if we were to lease the truck, we would get a brand-new truck. And so if we just leased it for the hours, I'm not saying make him go without the truck. If we just leased a high-quality, new piece of equipment that we could take up and down, that we would need to know how often he would do that, so we could, so we could compare it to what, we can't save everything if we're gonna rent a piece of equipment, but we would save a lot. Plus, we would have a really new truck, not another old truck, for $30,000 that wasn't maybe as safe. The problem with boom trucks, having, have, have some of those, they gotta be certified, the truck itself, on a yearly basis, has to be certified. And just like an airplane, it's quite costly when you have that in your inventory to get somebody to come up and certify the boom, that it does what it's supposed to do. And, you know, if there's any parts that need to be replaced, or any blocks that have to be taken out, and if we rented that, we would have a certified truck that was already checked. And so, the mayor's suggestion isn't a bad one, if we could lease the truck. And with that said, we could stack up the workload, so we would lease the truck for a week or something, change all the lights that we knew that were out, do the towers, and, and then give the truck back. We wouldn't have to maintain it or store it or any of those things.
So is there any consensus related to using some of that other money to come up with some differences, or...
I don't think there's any consensus, no. To answer your question. Yes, Councilman Christian?
Yes. I, when we're talking about towers, explain to me what towers that Tim and his crew works on, or Tim works on.
Uh, your honor, he works on towers specifically for the mesh network.
Okay, that's what I, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So that was...
Yes, we did. We absorbed three new towers, or four, like, I can't remember, three new towers for that project.
This is that system we put in a couple of years ago?
Yes.
Okay. Very important.
Another question, and this will just muddy the waters worse than they already are, I'm sure, but, uh, in the sanitation fund, there's professional and consulting for 80,000. What in the world is that for?
Your honor, that's for the old remediation of the old landfill that we talked about at a work session a couple of months ago, where we're on the list to, uh, have that remediated, and we've gotta have engineers to design that.
Okay. And then there was, um, about that same amount I saw, uh, somewhere as I was reading through it for rollouts. And, um, you know my feeling on rollouts, so if we could save that, uh, money there and set that back another year, well, it wouldn't hurt my feelings.
With that...
And that, that way, with that money, you could buy your bucket truck and make the third-party request whole.
Well, your honor, that's out of the sanitation fund, so that's, we, the, the contract for services is out of general fund.
Can't do that, okay.
Yeah.
Your honor? Anyway. When you come to those breakdowns on federal building, uh, the North Federal Boulevard Utilities, we have allocated $30,000 for engineering. And then down in the sewer fund, we have another $30,000 for the same project allocated for engineering. So, I remember passing the motion for one of those. Um, are both, have we passed motions on both of those for that, for that engineering? Or are they possibly the same engineering?
Uh, your honor, those are actually the same project. It's just, it's for the North Federal Utilities, which are both water and sewer, so each fund, enterprise fund, has to share in those engineering.
So it is 60,000. Thank you.
We could potentially, because it is a multi-year project, we could potentially reduce that. Engineering fees will be, would be going to a multi-year...
Two-year period. That project isn't starting until 2017, is it?
That's right.
Yeah, we're, yes, Councilman Fabian?
I don't, I guess I don't understand how that helps us, though, 'cause isn't that water fund and sewer fund not general fund? So I don't know why it's worth worrying about at this point.
You're correct. We're just looking for loose money.
Right. Gotta look in the general. That's the hard part. Um, well, if we, sorry, can I continue?
Sure.
All right. Um, so if we said, okay, I mean, I just did a quick look at Jiffy rental, and they don't have their bucket trucks on there, but they do have the really large long-arm forklift on there at 1,100 a week. And, I mean, I don't know, are we looking at 30 weeks' worth of, I, I mean, I, I don't know. That's the, that's the hard question to answer, which I guess can be looked at harder between now and then to see if we have some savings. But even if we say, okay, the 30,000 isn't in the discussion, that's 24,000, and we've, you know, at least I have looked hard at these numbers, and, I mean, if I could filter 24,000 back in through some of this, it seems like with the proposal we made, which was to cut everybody by 15%, and a lot of the people came here and said that they thought they could live with that. I mean, we're in a tight budget year, so I don't necessarily feel right about not cutting. I mean, I, I think we need to cut some. And so, but if we can filter, you know, the 9,000 out of the council budget and maybe the 15,000 for that lawn mower, if we feel like those are places that we can legitimately look toward, back into some of these spots, I really think we could come up with something that people could live with and still do what we, what we need to do.
Hey, your honor, even if we had a dollar amount, we, we, staff could make a recommendation of what we think we, we could cut. So if, if, if you want, if we have 60,000 to make them whole and you want to make it 40,000, then we'll make it work that way, and we'll have to cut out of those that we've talked about. Instead of you having to decide which ones you're gonna cut, 'cause that could go on for a while.
Sir? Yes, Councilman Canaan?
I guess I, I guess I'll ask the council then, is our concern that we're looking to bring everybody back up to last year's funding, or is our big concern our recreation that we're looking to bring up close to what they had last year and leave everybody else with a 15% cut? I mean, I, are we looking to fix everybody, or are we looking to fix one?
Your honor, my, as I, as I made, I think, clear in the email I sent out, there are a few of these that I see as vital, um, city services and some others that I see as vital humanitarian services. And in my opinion, I think we should do everything we can to keep the vital city services as close to fully funded as we can, and I don't know that I'd necessarily just pick our rec and then cut everybody else 15%, because as Stephen pointed out, if we cut VOA back by 15%, we're probably gonna see that same cost show up in the police department, probably actually more so than if we were to put it in there. So I, I feel like, as much as we hate to sit here and say, well, these guys should get this amount, and these guys should get this amount, and it's not, it's not a referendum on the quality of their service, but we're the city, our job is to take care of our city and our community to the extent we're able to, and right now, times are lean. I mean, I've, my house is done without cable for an entire year before because times were lean, and that's what we had to do to meet our financial goals. And this is no different. I mean, I have nothing against some of these organizations, but, I mean, it's time we gotta turn the cable off if that's what has to happen. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Your honor, we're not, are we looking for a motion tonight? Are we just looking...
Not necessarily a motion, just a...
Looking for that, right? We're gonna come back and, I think we oughta, I think we oughta ask you to go back and look at the equipment list and, and see if there's some places that we can save some money. This is, this is why I asked the question about administrative allocation. If we, if we looked at administrative allocation, could we put, could we put a portion of funds in there to help us with this as we, as we pay for other services that the administrators are, are doing? Is that reality? If, if your justification is what they're gonna use, they don't have a percentage or anything of that nature that limits you to what you can move in that allocation?
Your honor?
Yes. Courtney?
I guess, um, ethically, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't recommend that. Um, those admin allocations are heavily scrutinized by auditors. We spent four years telling them we don't balance the budget by admin allocations because many municipalities do. And so that's why we came up with different formulas of items in the budget. For instance, if things are directly billed out, they don't go in the admin allocations. So, for instance, um, administrative services, I'm, my department's in part of those admin allocations, but if office supplies are directly billed to me, it doesn't go in the admin allocations, it goes in the overall cost. So there are certain line items I pull out of the admin allocations. I'm not saying equipment is one of them, but, um, yeah, probably not. Councilman Gard?
Thank you.
And also on fixed assets as well.
Say that again?
Fixed assets.
Okay.
When we buy a piece of property or a piece of equipment, it has to go back to that fund.
I mean, your honor, do, would it be useful for us to look at, like, to go through each one of these lines and go to each council member and get a feel for where they're at on each of these so that you guys can base your...
Well, something would help, I, right now, I just, I don't know how we're gonna do it. I mean, we're scheduled to put numbers in the budget and actually pass that in June, and if, if we don't, if we put our allocations together and then you come forward in front of the council and none of them agree on that, then we're right back to square one again.
I feel like we could reasonably say, you know, if we bumped that recommendation from staff, that, staff said that 340,867 dollars was what they thought that should be. Now, we've looked at our own house and some of the equipment stuff and said, okay, well, we think we've reasonably found about $25,000. So if we said 365, and my opinion is staff should weigh heavily the things that will cost the city the most if they go away, and then filter things down from there, I wouldn't have a problem with going that direction personally. I don't know how everybody else feels, though.
Just in looking through, um, for my own benefit, and I guess we're just, uh, you take, uh, youth services, uh, from 45,000, which I think is a lot of money for youth services in our community personally, so I don't have any problem at all with cutting youth services back to 38.
On, they requested 36.
Yeah. So I don't have any problem with that. Um, okay, volunteer firemen, I think we are getting such a steal from the volunteers in our community that it's a real personal slap in their face to cut them 1,500 on the services. If we had to go out and buy that service, it'd be well over $2 million. And so I think that's just a, um, you know, a personal thing I feel uncomfortable with. Volunteers of America, um, I think they're providing a great service and whatnot. I think that, that, that they can probably handle that, um, and, um, they're a large enough organization that I think that, that we're not gonna see the, the ripple effect there. But, um, regarding, uh, Good Samaritan Center, uh, we're talking 900 is what we're talking about, cutting them back. That's a drop in the bucket for humanitarian services in our community, uh, for, for that, um, center. Pause. Um, you know, we're, we're talking 900 for Good Samaritan, yet we're spending 42.5 for animals. There's something about that that just, I just have a problem with, you know? And so, um, I, I guess if we're able to, um, to cut back on our humanitarian services proportionally, then it wouldn't be unreasonable to, um, to cut back, pause to that. then it wouldn't be unreasonable to, um, to cut back, pause to that amount. And yet, um, I know if, if the city had to take over pause, it would cost us a bunch. So I think we're getting a, a real bang for our buck there, but it is a tight time. Uh, regarding Children's Advocacy Project, um, I just cannot imagine the heartbreak that it causes families to have to take their child clear down to Casper to have them interviewed by an attorney someplace and then come back and go through the same thing over and over and over again for the little bit of money that we're talking about there, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. I, come on, you guys. I'll, I'll donate a little bit to that one. Um, that is just, I think, such a good project for our, uh, youth that get, that get caught in that kind of a situation. Um, regarding the Chamber of Commerce, they're dropping down, which is great. We appreciate that. Injury Prevention Resources, uh, they're taking a cut of seven hundred and fifty dollars. It's nothing. The American Legion, apparently they've dropped off. I know I, in the past, I've had to remind them that there's five hundred dollars sitting down at the city if somebody will come by and pick it up. And they haven't done that. So apparently, five hundred dollars is not even in the budget at this time. Uh, CWC Rec Services, that's the one that's, that's the big gorilla in the room that, um, with the meetings that we've had with, uh, CWC, uh, they're holding pretty firm on that hundred and forty-five thousand. And if we have to pick back up the recreation program, if, I, I don't, I can't envision them dropping it, but if they did, and it's my understanding that they've had to let go, uh, a twenty-two-year employee. And so somebody made a pretty tough decision up there in that area. So I would, I would hate to see us. But, um, that's just my overall read on the way I'm looking at it. And I don't know how that meshes with everyone else or, or how you wanna move forward, or, um, Councilman Guard.
If I, Your Honor, if I checked those rights, you're talking the Child Advocacy, Volunteers, the Volunteer Firemen, uh, VOA, and ARFA REC? Be funded fully?
Yes. I, I think definitely Children's Advocacy Project needs to be funded fully. I think Good Samaritan should be funded.
Okay. So there's five out of the nine, and, and I would agree with that. I, I think we just oughta poll the council and, and see if they agree with that. And then we'll send you back with sharpen your pencil and find that much money.
Yeah.
And, and to me, it's, it's personally a lot harder to go through it item by item by item. It's the easiest thing to do is just say, cut everybody fifteen percent and walk away. But I think that, that that's what we're here for, is to try to, to, to make those judgment calls. And, um, but it's not easy. I agree, so.
That'd be the Child Advocates, Volunteer Firemen, VOA, Good Samaritan, and ARFA REC. Try to fund them a full, full percent. And then the others, you know, um, some of them have already taken it, so, you know, they're alright with their cut. And then let's move the mon, let's move the eleven-nine out of the city. It's actually nine thousand and, and then what was given back in the cuts.
Yeah.
And let's use that money and maybe the bucket truck. And, um, I'll help, I'll give Tim a boost.
Is that, does everyone feel comfortable in that? I mean, or at least the consensus of the council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
What's, what's the total on those five, if we were to fund those fully, on the difference between where we're at now?
It's not that much. I can add it up if you... Come on, Joe.
Sorry, which five were they? I can do this.
Child Advocacy.
CAP, so that's gonna be...
They, they were wanting, thirty-five was last year, and...
Five hundred and twenty-five, okay.
And then, uh, Volunteers, uh, the Firemen.
Volunteer Firemen is...
That's ten thousand.
Okay.
The, um, Volunteers of America, they're, they wanna remain at twelve-five.
So that's...
That's, um...
Five, one, two, three, four, five.
Seven...
Seventeen, no.
Sixteen, eight, seventeen.
And then, uh, Good Samaritan is, uh, nine hundred. And then ARFA, uh, ARFA REC is, uh...
Good Samaritan, six.
Six hundred.
Excuse me. They were at six thousand.
Yes.
And we proposed to cut it...
It is nine hundred.
So it's a nine hundred difference, yeah.
Nine hundred difference, yeah. And then ARFA REC wanted to be at one forty-five, and, and we trimmed them down to one twenty-three, two fifty.
So let me, was that twenty-one, seven, fifty?
I just wanna make sure I'm on the same page. So we're talking about increasing Volunteer Firemen.
Correct.
Good Samaritan, pause. Uh, maybe I missed one here. Child Advocacy and, uh, CWC REC.
Correct.
Okay. Volunteers of America also?
Pause wasn't on that list.
Pause, pause wasn't.
Well, it was not pause, okay. So it wasn't pause.
That's, okay, those five that we just did...
The five twenty-five, okay.
Those five that we just talked about is forty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty, according to my figures.
We're awful close. If we take the bucket truck out and the eleven-nine, we can move.
Okay. Great.
So we're planning to keep the thirty-six thousand for youth services, put Volunteer Firemen all the way back up, put VOA all the way back up. And then with Good Samaritan all the way back up, leave pause at the forty-two-five. Put CAP at thirty-five hundred, leave the chamber at the, and they actually requested twenty thousand, one fifty-eight. So put them at what they requested. Injury Prevention Resources, we're leaving at four, forty-two fifty?
Fifty.
Okay. And then our rec, we're gonna put back up to a hundred and forty-five.
Now, the contingency would maybe, see if we could, if we need to buy that mower.
Okay.
Something's gotta move.
Great.
Do, Your Honor, do we own our, all of our mowers? We own them all? We don't lease them?
I believe we purchase all of them outright.
We might look at that for that expense of the piece of equipment, because we could pick it up and lease it and return it each year at the end of the lease. Might be something to look at. Only use it three months in the summer, or four. Might work. Might be a good way.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, moving on to employee compensation. Uh, the City of Riverton is a service-based organization which requires personnel to accomplish our task. And no surprise, the largest single category of expenses to provide services to the citizens is the personnel. Our employees are very important to the organization. They're what make, make the organization work. Local governments, which include counties, cities across the state, have similar benefit packages, salary, health insurance, some sort of retirement plan or a defined benefit plan. Uh, the reason to stay competitive is we end up losing people to other cities, which is very costly to the organization, particularly with positions that require certain education requirements or certifications. So staff is, uh, proposing the following and has been included in the budget. Um, annual performance-based merits, um, and those are, you know, when someone comes on with the city, they have a pay range. They start at the, at one and they go up to a certain amount, and then they cap out. And every year, if they have a, a good evaluation, they get increased by, by that amount. So those are included. Uh, no cost of living, uh, adjustments or stipends. Uh, health insurance increased by six percent. The increase will be absorbed proportionally both by the city and the employee based upon the current percentages that we have. Uh, the city for years has paid ninety-eight percent of the employee-only coverage. Uh, very few municipalities have a percentage that high. The employee-only contribution will increase from two percent to ten percent effective July first. This will make it consistent with our other coverages. This will give a five percent separation between the different coverages as you move down to family coverage. With this change and the six percent increase, the total cost to the city is twenty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-five. Total cost to the employees is forty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-four. Staff is proposing passing on the point seven-five percent increase to the Wyoming Retirement System. This was passed in the legislature this year. I picked an employee that is right in the middle of our pay scale to see the effect this would have on them. A mid-range employee that makes thirty-nine thousand would see an increase of two hundred and ninety-two dollars annually or eleven point, eleven dollars and twenty-three cents additionally per pay period. Um, per council direction, we're moving for a six-step pay scale to a ten-step pay scale. This will encourage longevity and avoid employees topping out so quickly. The top of the scale doesn't increase, it just means the step increases will not be as large as they've been in the past. We've structured it so the first couple of years are larger and the steps further up the scale are smaller. Any questions on that? Oh, what happened? My, this must have changed. So here's a chart showing our most-used plan. It was all lined up when I saved it, but it must be a different version. Uh, this is the fifteen-hundred deductible plan, which takes into account a hundred and six employees. We only have one employee using the thousand-deductible plan. As you can see, a majority of our employees are on the employee-only health plan, either because they're single or it's cheaper. This concerns me a little bit because it shows two things. We have an aging workforce, which means we're going to start losing people. And the second is we have people not covering their spouses and kids. Third, as we try to recruit people to work for Riverton, those are items people will consider in taking the job. We require employees to pay for the bottom three more than any other entity that we could find. If you could remember our survey from a couple of years ago, the highest amount any other entity required the employee to pay for family coverage was two hundred and ninety-five. So you can see, uh, with the increases that we're having this year on the family, it'd be five hundred and eighteen dollars and, uh, two cents per month. Uh, the employee only at seventy-six, twenty-eight. Any questions on the employee? All right, capital. If you go in the back of your... Well, you can either look in the budget message, it has an explanation of all the capital, but also in the very back of your budget book, there's a one-page summary that lists all of the capital, what fund they're in, and then broken down depending on if they have grants for them or if it's coming out of city funds or, um, consensus funds. So our, our budget capital shows a decrease from fiscal year fourteen of, from eleven million, nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-one to five million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and five. If you refer to the Capital Improvement Plan spreadsheet in the back, there are many funding sources from supplemental funding, grants, loans, and reserves. A couple of items to point out on the capital plan. This next year is mainly focusing on projects that we've already started, and we kinda talked about that. If we gotta finish up the ones that we've got going on that are multi-year. Um, I'll try to highlight some of the new ones. In the general fund, we have the West Park SRTS is a Safe Routes to School Grant to construct sidewalks on the north side of West Park from North Sixth Street to North Eighth Street West. Uh, the park improvement one that you see on there is the carryover from the previous year from the Central Wyoming Skateboarding Association to help build the skate parks. So that's not an additional forty thousand. That's the forty thousand we allocated to them last year. Uh, municipal court software, our, our software is not supported, um, by the company anymore because it's so old, uh, so we need to update. And so that's a necessity. On the water fund, uh, we have a capital project to do a, a leak detection survey. Um, we actually have a fairly high leak, leaking rate compared to AWWA standards, which is the Water Works Association. I think we're up to, what was the number you told me, Don? Thirty? About thirty percent. We should be somewhere between fifteen and twenty on, uh, for leak detection. So there's capital project in there to hire a consultant to come and look at that. Uh, miscellaneous water improvements monies will be there to actually help us fix some of those that, when, when we find those leaks. And then we also have a few around town, like the Pebble Beach water line that we've had multiple breaks on that we wanna fix.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman.
Is a effort being undertaken to make sure that, uh, we're not going in and fixing lines that maybe don't have to be fixed if the force committee is looking at those roads um, in the next few years even?
Your Honor, I believe, especially on the, on the federal, when we hire the consultants, they'll be looking at that. There may be some, instead of just tearing up all the lines and putting them in. I mean, if there, there are newer sections, there's probably no reason to replace those.
I'm just thinking, like you mentioned Pebble Beach or something. If the force committee is looking at that as one of the roads they're planning to redo, it might be who us to hold off until...
Oh, yeah.
That, that water line runs parallel to Pebble Beach, and so it wouldn't be, have anything to do with infrastructure on the road.
Oh, it's not under the road?
No, I call it Pebble Beach because that's the closest road to it, but it runs actually directly in back of all those, if those houses were to be built, it'd be right kind of in the backyard of that and partially in, into the golf course.
I understand, yeah. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Guard.
It's inter, it's interesting that all engineering is costing thirty thousand. Are we getting any bids, or that's just a number we're plugging in?
Your Honor, this leak detection survey is not engineering cost, and I did receive a quote from them. It's a service that they do and come out and actually put the, um, put a piece of equipment to the lines and listen to see if there's any leaks in it.
And it's in the line, or do they meter the line?
No, they...
They, they flow down the line?
They put a probe on, like, the valves and they'll listen. Listen to the water flowing through the water line.
That'd be a good idea. We'd catch a lot of water back that way.
Yeah, I think they almost have those little ones like the doctors use, and they put it up next there and they can hear the swishing sounds and know that there's leaks.
Well, just like that one we were looking at on, um, Westview, it's flowing underneath that pipe. A lot of water.
Yeah. All right, the airport fund. Uh, we have a big runway project that will start in this fiscal year and at the end, and in the end, in the next fiscal year. Um, the total amount is around fifteen million, and our portion is just over four hundred thousand. As you can see, we have not budgeted the full amount because it will start in April or May of next year. The construction portion will be addressed in our mid-year budget review so we can have more accurate numbers. But what's nice is we have the passenger facilities fees that are, are charged of every ticket sold out of Riverton. That goes into a special fund in our budget, and those monies can be used for capital projects. And so I believe we have three hundred and some thousand in that fund, is that right?
Yes, three fifty-eight.
Yeah, three hundred and fifty thousand. So that will, and, and so this is kind of a two-year project. It will, a lot of the design will be done in this year and a portion of it in this year, but then, uh, next year we'll have the bulk of it.
Your Honor? Yes. What is federally mandated about the airport runway?
How long do we have?
Yeah, how long do you have?
Well, I'm a simple person, you can use...
Councilman Guard gave a great explanation at our RECDA.
The, the difference nationwide, they have a gradient requirement for a runway, for flat, for its elevation. And our pilots in our area don't mind the elevation on the west end of the runway, but it's about twelve to fifteen feet higher than the FAA would like it to be.
Flatness.
And so we're gonna, that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna, and that's why they lowered Paradise Valley Road already, and that's why we put the balls on the, um, the power line as we, as you drive out west of town towards Dewboys. Those are all in preparation for lowering this runway fifteen feet. Those are all in preparation for lowering this runway fifteen feet. We're gonna take that dirt that's under there and move it to the cross runway, to the north end of the cross runway and fill a gorge that's over there. So someday we could extend the, the runway, the, the crosswinds runway. But that's all magic money from the FAA. They give us a million dollars every year because we're over ten thousand enplanements. And, and then they give us, we only had to pay two percent of all the improvements up there. But they give us a list of improvements that wipes out the million dollars plus goes into our general fund usually. Is that not correct?
You're saying that the flatness is, it's too high on the takeoff.
And so...
It's too high on the landing on the, on the east side of the airport.
The east side of the airport is fine. It's already been worked.
West.
From the center point west is, is where it has to come down to, to meet. And, and their explanation is they're gonna pay the fifteen million to do it. We just have to put in two percent, which is around four hundred thousand. But it keeps us broke as we, as we do that. And that's, that's almost every year, that's how that fund works. And it's, it's to keep airports, uh, and we tried to, we tried to get out of that. We went to the FAA and to J-Aviation and asked them what it would, if we dropped out, what would happen. It took us ten years to get in the queue and they said we'd drop all the way out. And the surfaces on our runways wouldn't last until we got back in. And so we're really, we don't have a choice. We're there. Thank you.
Yeah, Your Honor, they, this million dollars, I think a lot of people think that they sent us a check that go, we deposit in our bank account to be used towards operations or something. It's not. I mean, we never get that money. It just gets used for these type of projects and costs us even more.
It has those kind of strings attached to it, that's all. But if you want to maintain your regional airport status and, you know, and...
We, we can and have shared the funds with other municipalities like Laramie when, when we have an overabundance of it. But there's, there's really no money, it's all monopoly money.
It's all money.
All right, reserves. I'd like to applaud the council and your efforts to keep setting aside eighteen point five percent for reserves. You never know when you're gonna need those and, and disasters strike or sudden plunges in revenue streams. Um, all of our funds are projected to have the eighteen point five percent except for the airport. Uh, this is a slide that we added. This slide shows an example of, of cash on hand in the general fund. Um, I wa, I wanted to clarify, when staff says we will, we'll be funding this out of reserves, uh, we, we essentially have two kinds of reserves. And they're not separated in a, a bank account under two different reserves. The first is the eighteen point five percent reserves that the council has directed that we keep on hand. The second is reserves that go beyond the eighteen point five percent. These reserves are set up to help us operationally when we write out big checks that eventually we'll get back through grants. It is also to pay for capital projects, which is the point of reserves. Uh, we save up money to do capital projects instead of having to go into debt to pay for them. Um, I wanted to clarify this term because I had a conversation with, with one of the council members. And they stated that when I was using the term, we'll take this out of reserves, they thought it meant the eighteen and a half percent. And, and it's, and it's not. We have other reserves that are available. You can see that in the general fund at this point in time, which is, you know, that changes daily. We have an additional five hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four above the eighteen point five percent in reserves. Having said that, this number changes all the time. It's just depending on the bills that come in and the money that comes in and the grants that come back in. This is just to illustrate that we do have more reserves than the eighteen point five percent.
This is another one of the anomalies when we say that we've got enterprise funds and the enterprise funds operates like a business. And yet the airport never has operated like a business. And yet it's an enterprise fund that's purportedly mandated by state law or something.
Yeah, to put in enterprise fund.
And, and it's never complied with that. And I still do not understand that, but anyway.
I think Courtney would like to roll it into the general fund.
Might as well be.
I mean, it's just crazy.
So in conclusion, the work of the City of Riverton is important, even critical. Its products have a profound impact on the quality of, of the daily lives of its citizens. Um, preparation of this budget is, is a team effort. Um, we, we really approach it in a, in a spirit of interdepartmental cooperation. Even though some of them want certain things, they realize in the end that either we don't have the money or... Um, so I would like to thank all of our department heads, Courtney, Mike, and Don, and Sandy. Also, special kudos to Courtney and Gloria for all their time. They put a lot of effort into this, into this budget. Uh, the plan is to adopt the budget at our first regular meeting in June, unless there's substantial changes from the council. It's pretty much straightforward except for the contract for services. And it looks like we have a little bit of direction there. And the final thing is happy birthday, Mayor. Today is the mayor's birthday. Like to wish him a happy birthday and...
Thank you, thank you.
Thirty-seven again, huh?
That was unexpected. Please, please don't sing.
Now I'm offended.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Above the eighteen and a half percent, how much do you usually try to keep in there for like making sure you don't have to dip into that eighteen and a half percent for operations?
That's a great question. Depends on the fund.
Okay.
So for general fund, we like to keep, uh, over and above the eighteen and a half percent, one point two million, which is also like eighteen and a half percent, right, of our projected revenues.
Okay.
But we have not been able to do that. A lot of it has to do with the airport drawdowns. But we don't have the cash on hand because of the projects that are being taken out of the general fund now that we didn't know we were gonna have to come up with at the beginning of last fiscal year. If you remember, that was about one point one million when we found out we were gonna have to cover these projects. So that's why it's not in my comfort zone to be at five hundred and seventy-six thousand when you're talking about making payroll. You don't know if bills are incurred, you don't know what's coming in in the next two weeks. So, but Gloria and I have discussed it at length. One point two to one point five is good for general fund, over and above.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have one question. On the EPA litigation, have we received any idea of what that's costing us in our litigation budget?
Your Honor, I've, I've noticed in the bills probably went up a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars every month compared to what we're used to receiving from our attorney. So that's why we, we more than doubled the amount that we had from last year. But once again, that is a best guess. I mean, I think he had told us somewhere around twenty thousand.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Gard.
Did we ever get much of a feel from the legislators at the state level as to whether that money that was set aside is going to be able to be used directly by us or not?
Yeah, Your Honor, that's a good question. That was one we posed and I think it was, it got up to the governor's office and then we haven't heard anything back from him. So that's something we'll follow up with.
It was my understanding that that was one of the reasons that money was set aside specifically.
That's what Senator Beboud said.
We need to be following up on that.
Is there any other questions that anyone has, Mr. Weaver?
I tried to get the music so it could play happy birthday things, but I didn't know how to do that.
Party house. Appreciate your not being able to accomplish that.
Good job, staff.
I know the, uh, pages that you have, the summary pages were very helpful to me as I was reading, reading through it. And I was struck by, um, it seemed like everyone was trying to cut into their budget as far as they could and make adjustments to, you know, and, and, um, so there wasn't a lot of, um, boisterousness as far as spending money. It didn't, didn't appear. And I, we don't like to see that, but it is what it is, so. Any other questions, comments? Anyone else? Your Honor? Yes?
I just thought of one other thing. The contract for services that we are cutting, um, we could look at mid-year and if our financial position is better, we may be able to, at that point, maybe inject some money into those cut entities.
Yeah, Your Honor, that, it's something I failed to mention. I meant to bring that up. I mean, if we look mid-year and sales taxes screaming like it does, is up in Gillette and, um, we have extra money, that's definitely something we could look at for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all your hard work, Stephen, and the staff. I know you've been working on it for quite a while and you've done an outstanding job. Um, and, uh, I think that's probably reflective of the few questions that we've had. I've been in some budget sessions where we sit here for several hours. And, uh, so anyway, thank you again. Okay, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the work session.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved in second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign?